With liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for our armed forces who continue to fight for our freedom overseas and those who have lost their lives in doing so. Good evening, welcome to the Village Board meeting of Monday, October 5th. The first item on the agenda is to set the dates for the November 2015 meetings. The workshop will be on Wednesday, October 28th at 7:00 PM and the board meeting will be Monday, November 9th at 7:30 PM. Please note that the board meeting is not the first Monday this in November, it will be the second Monday in November. The fire department is at a drill and not here tonight. They just wanted to update that the EQ will be delivered in about three weeks, so they're very much looking forward to that. Culture and Recreation, Kathy Mills.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Village Board. A few things that we have coming up. We have the Dare Dance, the first one of the season, this Friday, October 9th, and it's at 7:00 to 9:00 in the community center. The next item on the agenda, we have the window painting, which includes 6th grade, 7th grade, and 8th grade students from Rampouls Central Schools and from Sacred Heart. That will be on October 17th, it's a Saturday. We're working with the Chamber of Commerce and currently we have 28 teams signed up and on each team there's up to three students. And the Chamber of Commerce gives out prizes for the pictures, so it's a great event. So again, we have 28 teams as of this point. And that'll be at 10:00 AM till 1 o'clock on the 17th. On Tuesday, October 20th, we've got the Lyons Club Blood Drive over at the community center and that will be 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. We've got the Halloween Parade coming up on Saturday, October 20th, I'm sorry, Sunday, October 25th, and that's at 2:00 PM, lining up down at the end of Lafayette and then coming up to the gazebo where we'll have refreshments and the Halloween judging. So we look forward to that, that's always a great event for the village. We have going forward into the year, we have the Veterans Day Parade, which will be on Wednesday, November 11th, 11:11 at 11 o'clock AM, and that will be lining up here at Village Hall. And then the Soldiers Monument will have a ceremony. We have the Christmas Parade coming up, that will be on Saturday, December 5th, that will be at 6:00 PM on Lafayette Avenue, and that will be starting Lafayette, going to the gazebo, and then meeting with Santa at the community center that evening. We have the Pearl Harbor Ceremony coming up on Sunday, December 6th, at 2 o'clock here in the Village Auditorium. It's always a nice event, we look forward to having that. And then for all of the public, we are selling tickets to ELF at Madison Square Garden and that will be on Sunday, December 13th, and tickets are $75, which includes a bus transportation and ticket to the show. So if anyone's interested in that, you can call Recreation and we do have tickets available, but they are going quickly. And that's it.
Kathy, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you so very, very much for the outstanding job that you did with Suffolk Day. You and your Recreation staff really made such a truly wonderful day for the village and a wonderful celebration of the village. Our fire department, our police department, our Department of Public Works just, you know, worked so hard to make it a wonderful day and it certainly was, including the weather.
Yes, the weather.
So I wanted to thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
And Chief Osborne and Chief Lapori, who had to step out for drill, and Joe Hunt and Charles Sawicki for the outstanding job that everyone did for Suffolk Day.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody.
Grant writer Fred Rella.
Good evening, Board. I'm working with the Suffolk Court, specifically Christine Anderson, and trying to get some money for them, for varying equipment. And it's through the New York State Unified Court System and it's called the JCAP program. It's called the Justice Court Assistance Program. Specifically, we're looking to get a walkthrough magnetometer. Right now, we just have the wands, which we have obtained through a grant previously. We need to install new electrical outlets for the magnetometers. We want to get a router for the department computers and the installation of all the computers through that router. But they want to get a shredder, several filing cabinets, a printer, and a new bookcase for the judges. All this totals approximately around $15,000. This is a grant which the money would go directly into our account, we don't have to spend the money and then ask for reimbursement. One of the criteria for the application, which is due October 16th, is that we have a board resolution saying that the mayor can sign the application and so can our sitting judge. So that's what's before you tonight and hopefully you vote positively for this.
Thank you, Fred. Do we have a motion?
Thank you.
So move. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Building Department, Steve Connolly.
Good evening, Mayor, Village Board. Just a quick monthly report. We did, issued 18 building permits last month and did 18 municipal searches. There were 24 fire inspections performed and six fire violations issued and the total for the month was $16,700. And we performed six orders to remedy or violations and 15 appearance tickets were issued. And that's pretty much where we're at right now.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Steve and I and our deputy mayor have really been taking a hard look at code enforcement and ways that we can address the overcrowding here in the village of Suffolk. You know, this is really something that we're very concerned about as to, for the safety of the residents, of the renters, and especially for our fire and police departments that need to go into these buildings. Really poses a big safety issue for the village. So we have been working for quite some time now in trying to find different ways to be more diligent and vigilant on making sure that we find out about these overcrowding issues. It's quite difficult at this point in time because you can't just walk up to someone's house and knock on their door and ask them to inspect their house. They have the right to say no. So it becomes increasingly difficult, of course, if that, you know, person living there is not in compliance with our local laws, they're not going to let you in. So two things have happened. We have formed finally, I didn't get too many volunteers, I was hoping to get more, for a task force for code enforcement here in the village of Suffolk. And what that would entail is for residents to come together with Gordon Wren, our Director of Fire and Emergency Services, as well as other groups that have already formed in response to overcrowding and unsafe conditions at houses. And what this task force would do would be you, the resident, would be trained what to look for in your neighborhood. So you can identify things that you might drive past every day and don't even realize that it really potentially could be a safety condition in the home. So basically, you would come, you would get educated, and then you would go out into your own neighborhoods and kind of like a Community Watch type of group that would be able to report these to our code enforcement department so that we may be able to better identify places that are hidden from us or don't, you know, not really out in the open. The second thing is, which I will pass out to the trustees, we, I was looking at some surrounding municipalities, specifically Airmont, who is working on a local law which would enable our village to pass a local law so that any house in the village that is not owner occupied would be subject to an annual inspection. They would also have to submit annual renters, ask for annual renters permits where they would submit everyone who is living in that home legally. And that would be kept at the code enforcement office and they would be able to take that with them into the home annually to make sure that this home is in compliance and is not overcrowded. So I had Terry work on a local law, which I will pass out to the trustees. We just finished it this afternoon.
Thank you.
Sorry, Karen. One for Virginia.
Thank you.
And Terry, you might as well keep one to refer to. So Terry, do you want to just quickly go over what we've?
Essentially, this is based on a couple of other municipalities, primarily Kingston and Islet, and it would require, as the mayor said, an annual permit for any non-owner occupied dwelling. There's a list of information that would be required. It also, they would have to have, if they're not a resident of the county, a local agent that was, would be able to accept process and that the building department would be able to get in touch with. That would involve an annual inspection, which, you know, consistent with the Constitution, somebody could still say no to, but at that point, they wouldn't be able to get a permit in order to enable them to rent it out. So, you know, there's other details and procedures in here, but that's basically the sum and substance.
Terry?
Yeah.
Is there a requirement now for occupied rental homes and a permit that's required now in the village?
In the code, there is an inspection requirement for multifamily.
And multifamily is over two?
I believe.
Or two and over?
Over two, I believe.
Over two.
So the requirement would be basically the same?
No, there's a lot more detail.
On occupied?
There's a lot more detail in this.
More detail.
A permit would be required and there's specific information, including local agent, people who reside there, various details that I have in the law here are not covered in the existing provision.
Any other board members have any questions?
This law is only in effect in central Islet?
It could be in other locations, but I kind of grafted parts from different communities, as I say, primarily Kingston and Islet. You know, some of the things were not applicable, I thought, here, so, you know, you kind of take the best from each.
Okay. I'll look at it.
Does anyone else have any other questions?
No.
Okay, I'd like to move this tonight if we possibly can. I think it's a very important part of our diligence in keeping our residents and our fire and police departments safe. I think it protects all important lives. And I think by, you know, making a stronger stand on this overcrowding issue, I'm hoping that landlords will stand up and take notice that I'm certainly not going to tolerate any unsafe conditions for any resident or fire emergency services here in the village. So will someone move this?
So moved.
Well, you want to set a public hearing.
Right, set a public hearing.
Public hearing.
So moved.
So moved, public hearing.
Do I have a second?
I got a.
Why don't you set the public hearing?
Yes, that's what it is.
Do you have a question, Bob?
Yeah.
Okay, hold on, I just need a second and then we can have discussion.
Second.
Okay, I have a second, Bob?
I'm sorry, somebody seconded it.
Yeah, I have a second.
Okay.
My question is, we have a resource available to us now that, and I'm full agree, I'm in full agreement that whatever steps we can take, we should take to, you know, kind of rein in what's going on in the village. But why don't we reach out to the, I know when I talked to Steve prior to this, there's a problem with search warrants, there's a problem getting access to the property. And we talked to the head of the code enforcement unit at the county level and where our summonses are handled by the criminal court, their summonses are handled by an administrative judge. And it changes the burden of proof and requirements, et cetera, et cetera. Terry can expand on that. But when we talk to them, it seems to make sense to me that we team up with the county We have no, there's no downside for us. Any violations and revenue generated from those violations would still be able to be written. There's never a question, there's not a question of double jeopardy since the county inspectors are writing on the public health laws, which we don't write. So we would, in effect, and also the, the level of proof, if I understand it correctly, for getting a search warrant to go into a house is much less than it is under criminal statutes. So maybe, you know, again, I'm all for the task force, everything we can do to curtail this, but I think we ought to make a positive step and reach out to Rocket County Health Department and see if we can get their inspectors to come in and work with ours.
Mr. Morris, we already do that. As a matter of fact, the property that was on Orange Avenue, the health department, the village of Suffolk worked on together. So we are really already utilizing the health department in different situations that we have here in the village. And it's an excellent resource and they're always very willing to work with the village and we've had a great relationship with them thus far. And I'm sure that this village would really, truly want to continue that relationship to make sure that we use every avenue we possibly can to combat this problem that exists all over the county.
To speak to that matter also in regards to, you know, protecting our firefighters and policemen and first responders, it's always a great idea to explore any, any type of changes that would, that would protect the safety, even the residents and the first responders. Also going to Mr. Morris's point, with the county and teaming up with the county or working in conjunction with or in concert with, is that they also have a confidential reporting system that we would be able to utilize here in the village on our website. So with the task force in place that you are planning on forming or have formed, that we would be able to report violations or suspected violations to the county and to the village at the same time. There's a possibility of doing that on our website.
Right, well, we already have on our website where you can, you can report them.
Is it confidential?
Yeah, they just don't have to put their name on it. I mean, that's, that's fine. But that being said, if in fact there are violations that would include the county, we notify the county and they come over, and vice versa, we've had opportunity where the county has found violations from someone who's called the county and not the village, and they pass it over to the village. So we really have had a great relationship with them.
Okay.
And, you know, we do make sure that we, we work in conjunction with them and it really is very effective.
And we really do need to build on it.
Yeah.
Going forward, we need to build on it, we need to stop the spread of this overcrowding and misuse of property.
And that is exactly why we've taken a very firm stand on it. Okay, so I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, for 7:40 on November 9th, Joe?
Yes.
So moved.
And I have a second for Mr. Markounis, correct?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you. We will now go to our first public hearing. Terry?
No, I think I have the law here, so that's fine. Sure, okay. Yeah, the first proposed local law here is very simple. It's lowering the speed limit on the entire length of Parkside Drive to 25 miles per hour, which is the downward limit that the state law allows a municipality to set a speed limit at.
Would anybody like to speak? Okay, if not, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion for the speed limit on Parkside Drive.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried. Thank you, Chief Osborne. We have our second public hearing, no parking along Temple Lane at the Chief Clark Osborne Heroes Park. We will open the public hearing, would anybody like to speak?
James Lyons, 29 Temple. I live right down the street from the park, maybe 25 yards away. I see kids running in and out of there all the time, running between parked cars. It's really very dangerous for them. So if you could just put signs up on either side of the park, no parking any time, cars coming down the street would then be able to see kids and it's a big safety issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? This is on the public hearing for the parking. This is for the public hearing on the parking.
On the parking?
Yeah.
Audience participation?
Oh, okay, audience participation's coming up soon, so just hold on to it until we're done, okay? Did you want to speak on this, Joe?
I just wanted to ask on Temple Lane?
Just state your name and address, sweetie, thank you.
Carol Verano, Suffolk, New York. Okay, I just want to speak on Temple Lane, on the parking. If maybe you could, it is crowded, if you could specify certain spots, fire zones, not only just no parking to give room so that if there is a fire emergency, like we recently had over by the church with us, there's more room for our apparatus to get in there. Since people won't be parking there, we could specify it specifically for that area, certain spots along the road.
Okay, I'll certainly take it up with the fire chief and the police chief, thank Would anyone else like to speak? Okay, if not, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Motion for the no parking along Temple Lane?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morris?
I have one question, I'm sorry.
Oops, on the motion, go ahead.
On the motion. Is there a difference between no parking and no standing? Would that make any difference, Chief?
No, I believe no standing is really, can't even pull up the, that board, stop the wall. I would, in regards to this, I think no parking would probably suffice.
Okay.
But no standing would, you know, couldn't pull up the wall. You may have somebody pull up when the kid out.
Right.
The guy in front of that, the guy that's running.
Okay, thank you.
That's a good question.
Okay, so I have a motion, I have a second. Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Lyons, for bringing that to our attention, we really appreciate the residents bringing safety situations to our attention in their neighborhoods.
And the sign, the work order for the signs will be generated?
Village Attorney.
Thank you. As we spoke Wednesday night at the workshop meeting, I'd received a letter from the attorney for the VFW demanding that we either close or advise them that we don't wish to go ahead with the contract, so I need direction from the board.
Okay, I guess we would need a motion to move forward to some?
Well, the two things that were pending before were the motion to adopt a negative declaration under?
I thought we did a negative declaration.
No, it was all voted down.
Oh, okay.
So, so we, if we're going to go forward, we have to adopt, adopt a negative declaration under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, which just means that the purchase and the financing doesn't have a significant impact on the environment, and then you have the financing resolution. But you can either do that or at least give me direction by motion, what I should advise the seller's attorney.
Okay, so do you want me to go ahead with the motion that we all go ahead with the?
Yeah, I think let's just get a sense of what the board wants and then we can do any other resolutions depending on that.
So go forward with?
If that's a motion to instruct me to proceed with the seller's?
Right, so that's what I was going to say. So do we have a motion to proceed with the?
Purchase.
Purchase of the VFW? So moved. Do I have a second? I will second it. Mr. Morris?
No.
Mr. Hagan?
No.
Mr. Markounis?
No.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is turned down. So we don't need to go any further.
Well, I, I?
I mean, you have to?
I guess I would like some, some explicit direction so that it's just not hanging because the seller's attorney wants to move forward in a different direction if we're not going to go ahead with it. So I think I need a direction from the board, specifically what to do, because we're now still in limbo.
I'll make a motion that we don't go forward with the purchase.
We just did that.
No, you didn't.
Yeah, no.
You voted down.
Terry, what would you recommend on the motion?
Right. Well, I, I think I need direction, if that's, if I get what Mr. Morris is suggesting, I think I need direction to advise the seller's attorney that the village is not going forward and that with their permission, which they've indicated in this letter, that the village wishes to cancel the contract with no further rights or obligations from either of the parties.
Is that what you're motioning, Mr. Morris?
Yes, it is.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Who is the second? Mr. Hagan? Okay, Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan? Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
No.
And I would just like to say that I'm very, very disappointed that we are not going forward with the purchase of this VFW hall. I think that it's, it's very sad that when we have an opportunity to acquire a piece of property that is valued much more than the purchase of it, and that will be invaluable to the village as far as the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, all of our children's groups being able to utilize it, as well as making sure that our VFW members have a home still there, and would also create a source of revenue for the village. So I, if the veterans are here tonight, I apologize to you from myself.
And myself as well.
Yeah.
Oh, it is, I see.
And I, I hope that, you know, things go well for you going forward and certainly we'll have my support if I could be of any going forward with the property. And I vote.
Okay. The second item I had, as you recall, we've been moving forward with the hospital zone. Last meeting, you indicated your intent to be lead agency under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. At this point, the planner that we have now back on board is just fine tuning some of the background information you need. The application or the zone change petition, I should say, has been referred anew to the county Department of Planning since it was last referred to them a couple of years ago. And at this point, if the board wants to proceed, I would suggest that you set a public hearing for the November meeting. I think everything will be in in advance of that meeting, so you'd be in a position to make a decision or at least hold a public hearing on it.
Okay, do I have a motion for the public hearing?
I'll make a motion for the public hearing.
7:45, November 9th. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Police Department, Chief Osborne.
Mr. Mayor, I just have some informational items for you tonight. I want to thank you for dropping the speed limit down on Parkside, that's one of our streets. All these roads around it are 25 for some reason, I don't know why it didn't make the list four or five years ago, but I appreciate you taking care of that. My informational items are very simple. We had a commercial vehicle check a few weeks ago, that was our third one this past season. We're going to be having another one coming up in the near future, which obviously will be our fourth, very good results, took a lot of unsafe vehicles off the road. Our accreditation process, Sergeant Andy Lachlan is in charge of our accreditation status. We were re-accredited in 2014. Our first accreditation was December of 2009. What that means is we had to meet over 130 standards that were approved by the New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services. We met and exceeded those standards and at this time, we applied 2014, we received it again, and we are, at this time of the year, we are re-upping all of our policies again to meet their standards. We are one of only 20% of the police departments in the state of New York that have reached disaccreditation status, so it's a great thing to have for us. We have been aggressively going after vehicle and traffic enforcement, numerous locations we work on, every month we sort of take, every week we sort of take different ones that we attack. This last month, we based it off of officer observations, accident reports, and citizen This last month, we based it off of officer observations, accident reports, and citizen complaints. And our main areas were Woodland Drive, Boyan Avenue, Washington Ave., Bonner Circle, Lafayette Ave., and Hillside Ave. We'll be changing those around within the next few days, hit up some other locations as well. Last two things, Dare Hockey's going great, Week 4, 14 teams, kids are doing awesome. And there's a Dare Dance, thanks to Kathy, there's a Dare Dance on Friday night. You're all welcome to come in, but I would come in with earplugs and get out quick if I was you guys. So have a great night, and thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Department of Public Works, Charles Sawicki.
Good evening, Mayor and the Board. In July, a MEO2 employee retired from the Refuge Department. The remaining balance of the schedule of salaries and wages from the Refuge Department slated for him is $24,134. The remaining balance will allow a newly hired laborer to work 34 weeks during the fiscal 2016 year, and that amount comes to $22,930. I am requesting the Mayor to appoint Mr. Gabriel A. Vasquez to the vacant laborer's position within the Refuge Department. Mr. Vasquez has been approved by the Rockland County Personnel and is a resident of Suffolk and has a CDL driver's license. The pay rate for this position is $16.68 per hour, with a starting date of October 13, 2015.
13th, I'm sorry, Charles?
October 13th.
Okay, yeah, so in lieu of the fact that this is a budgeted position, actually, it's a lower position than we originally budgeted for, and we are not going to replace the higher salaried budget, and that the Department of Public Works has been working with a very reduced staff. I commend them very much for what they have been able to accomplish. However, it's truly needed to have another laborer down there. So I will appoint Mr. Vasquez as a laborer at the Department of Public Works. I need confirmation?
Yes.
Yes. Motion to confirm?
Motion to confirm.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay.
Okay, so what we did in the past, I know we've done it with the police department when we were approached to hire additional police officers, is that what we did with Chief Osborne and the Treasurer, and the Mayor included, is that we went over the organizational chart to determine how many workers and employees were needed based upon your manpower requirement. So that's what I would think that I would like to do before I move forward with this, to get a full, thorough understanding of the personnel and the shortage that you are indicating. So that's what I would do. That's my recommendation.
If I could just add one thing, in preparing the 2016 budget, we did reduce the Street Department from one laborer. So we're already down one laborer from the previous year. And we currently are utilizing a laborer from the Street Department to fill that position in the Refuge Department, because you need six employees, six people to run the Refuge Department on a daily basis.
Right, I know. Even when we were going over the budget, the recent, the 15-16 budget, there seemed to be a little bit of weight, weighted differently between the Street Department and the Refuge Department. So if that could be clarified to me, I'm speaking for myself, and to see what personnel are specifically needed, I would take a look at it.
The department head is telling you he's in need of a laborer.
I understand that.
And let me just say a couple of things. You know, at the workshop, you expressed this concern. You had between the workshop and tonight to make sure that you went and got the information that you needed. So you didn't do that, and you're leaving a department shorthanded. They're telling you they need six, they don't have six, they need to fulfill those spots in order for them to continue on to do the work.
Right, and I understand that.
And you're still saying you need more information.
Can I, can I add to that?
So, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
So my question, I guess, to you would be, why, between the workshop and today, have you not gotten your chart together, gone to the appropriate people, and made sure that you had that information?
I can answer that question. I did call you on Wednesday or Thursday indicating that I had a personal obligations on Thursday and Friday.
Okay, but an email...
So today is Monday, this is where I was going to address it, this is what I thought about.
May I say something here? At the workshop meeting, I think I asked Mr. Sawicki to produce a table of organization indicating the amount of people necessary in each department. And the answer I received was, "Well, we had one 20 years ago, I'm not sure", so on and so forth, with a pretty ineffectual answer.
No, that's not true.
So, excuse me.
Joanne, you were told Joanne has it.
You were asking Virginia, and Virginia is going to provide it.
Do you have, I asked you for it specifically.
Joanne has it, and that's what you were told.
Okay, again, I asked Mr. Sawicki for it. Do you have a table of organization for these people?
The way it was left, Mr. Morris, was that you asked Virginia for that particular charge.
I asked you directly, can you give me a table of organization indicating how many people are necessary to operate each department?
You said you were going to get it from the clerk.
No, I didn't say that at all.
Yes, you most certainly did, Mr. Morris.
All right, I think that's besides the point.
So, excuse me, Mr. Markounis. You originally asked Mr. Sawicki for it, and the village clerk told you that she had it, and that Joanne could give it to you, and you said, "Okay, I will get it from them".
Well, if there's any confusion, let me make it clear now, then, okay? It seems to be a difference of opinion as to what was actually said. I'm asking you for a table of organization of how many people are required to operate every department in the village under your jurisdiction. I might also point out that the MEO2 that you're seeking to replace did not perform laborers' work. This was the union president who was doing clerical work three or four days a week, right?
Well, this...
That's the MEO2 that we're looking to replace.
No, we're not replacing an MEO2.
Well, we're looking to replace him with a laborer's title.
Correct.
Correct?
Because we're already down one person.
Okay. If you can supply the table of organization, how many men you need for every department?
Doesn't that get done during, when you're reviewing the budget?
And we'll work on it.
And during the budget process...
How do you not know who your head count is during the budget?
During the budget process, every position is in the budget. Every position is laid out. So through the budget process, you were well aware of all of the positions that need to be filled.
I'm well aware of the numbers in the budget. That doesn't mean that those numbers are valid.
So I guess the...
What I'm asking for, and it's pretty simple, I mean, he runs the departments. How many people do you need in each department to run that particular department? And if there's a shortage, then we'll address it.
Okay, so Mr. Morris, I guess my next question to you and Mr. Markounis would be, then why would you pass a budget, budget for this position, allow the taxpayers to be encumbered by that number when you had no intention whatsoever of going forward and fully staffing our Department of Public Works?
Well, maybe reviewing what their needs are and what their necessities are. As in anything, you have to have an open mind and be flexible.
Okay, but you should have thought about that during budget time, not now.
I see, and I'm sure that, you know, all the budget malfunctions that have occurred over the years, you've thought about in advance also.
Okay. Mr. Morris, I'm going to caution you again.
Yeah, by all means.
I'm going to caution you again. You really have a horrible habit of making really nasty comments towards people, and this is not the time nor the place for them.
Well, then, you should limit, you should limit your statements also, okay?
I was asking questions, thank you.
No, you were making a statement.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Morris?
No.
Mr. Hagan?
No.
Mr. Markounis?
No.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion is not carried. I'm sorry, Mr. Sawicki.
Okay, next item here, I am requesting the Mayor to appoint Mr. Stephen Cottieras to the position of Sewer and Water Maintenance Mechanic 2, Grade 16, at a rate of pay of $33.84 per hour, effective October 6, 2015. Mr. Cottieras holds a Water D license and a Water 2B license. The position has been posted, and Mr. Cottieras has been approved by county personnel. The difference in hourly rate has been included in fiscal 2016 budget.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Just a question.
Second first, and then we can have discussion. Okay, go ahead.
Just a question. He's changing titles. Is that a title necessary to operate that particular?
Well, in the Water Department, we have historically had a Water and Sewer Maintenance 2 mechanic. A short while ago, the Mechanic 2 that we did have in the War Department was transferred to the Street Department, so we currently do not have that position with that employee in place. Mr. Cottieras has shown a high level of expertise. He's obtained the 2B license, which is a very big positive thing for the Village of Suffolk in regards to the Rockland County Health Department. It is quite difficult to get, and I was very happy to see that he did achieve that. And he has, on top of that, has, through his years of experience, has gained a higher, much higher level of expertise in terms of his mechanical ability, and he certainly exceeds that Mechanic 2 level at this point in time.
Okay, so historically, we've had this position there, and it was filled and utilized in that department for years, right?
Right.
And we lost that position, he was transferred to another department. I have no problem with it, then.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion is carried.
I am requesting authorization for Mr. Stephen Cottieras to attend a Water System Management Workshop on October 15, 2015. The workshop is located in New Windsor, New York, and has been approved for six water contact hours as required by the New York State Department of Health. Mr. Cottieras will utilize a village vehicle, and there will be no cost to the village.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion is carried. Okay, audience participation at this time, if you would like to speak, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. I've been living in the town for several decades, and I'd like to first talk about a couple of comments. The police, I never attend these meetings too much, I watch on television. The police, as far as I'm concerned, have all the bases covered. They do a good job. The Suffolk Day, which I do attend, was handled very well, and compliments to your director. I had an issue recently in City Hall, and I'd like to thank Virginia Mancher and you, Ms. Mayor, for facilitating that issue, taking care of it. I talk to people up in Bonair and Stonegate, Bonair and Stonegate, and they have a problem with this here, you know? When I was sitting in my chair, I closed my eyes, and I thought I was in Washington, where it doesn't seem like a lot of your board members are kind of working issues out. It looks like you can close your eyes, and the one side says no, and the other says yes. I mean, do you have meetings to discuss the issues?
Yes, we do.
You do, okay. And the big thing, and the important thing, is like I say, I don't come to these meetings in probably 30 years I've been a resident. Now, you did bring up an issue this evening about the VFW sale. On that, I read it numerous times in the paper, and I know, I'll ask you, Mayor, is there supposed to be a three-year increase in the property taxes of 16, 16, and 16? Is that true?
No.
That is not?
No, that is not true.
All right, can you tell me what the proposal is for the next three years?
Well, each budget is done individual, on an individual basis. So when it becomes time for our budget, you know, preparing, we sit down with our Treasurer, and we go through the process of what the needs are of the village in its whole, and then we start cutting back, and we start trimming it back, and then we come to a number which would reflect what the village would need for that coming year to cover its expenses.
All right, so you haven't come up for a number on the taxes?
We are not in that process yet, no.
Okay, good. The last thing on my mind, and talking to several, I'm a low-key political activist, unless needed, what do you call it? But I hear a lot of talk up in the Bonair-Ston gate area about the sale of the VFW. Now, you brought that up this evening, and it just, like I say, it just so happens that that was the issue that I was talking about. Number one, why is this rejected? And I'd like to ask the gentleman who, I see his name in the paper, who completely rejected the sale, Mr. Morris, do you have an answer for that?
Myself?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Do you have a reason why you're negative on the VFW sale?
Yeah, absolutely. You're looking at a village that is virtually broke. The New York State Controller's Office will verify what I'm saying. We've purchased buildings before in the past, 120, I think, Orange Avenue, and we managed to lose about $75,000 or $80,000 on that.
Hold it, wait, wait, we have to change tapes, Bob.
I can't hear you too well, Mr. Morris.
I'll get the mic.
Hold on just a minute, please.
We just have to change the tape.
Just hold on. Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, the VFW is a purchase that we can't afford.
How much was the purchase price, Mr. Morris?
I believe it was $150,000, if I'm not mistaken.
$150,000 is, according to a lot of people I talk about, is actually a steal. And you should have purchased that building.
Well, again, again, there's varying opinions of that. Is it a steal? I guess so. It depends. If the village takes it over, you're going to factor in the insurance cost, the maintenance cost, the heating cost, the cooling cost, all the other costs associated with a building. Our thought on the problem was, listen, let's get this building. We can certainly make accommodations for the vets here in the Village Hall, for a meeting hall, without a problem. But it certainly makes, I think, more sense to get the village, to get the VFW Hall back on the tax rolls, where it's zoned for, I believe, two or three family units over there. And if that could be made into a residential unit, you would have more people coming into the village, more people spending money, and you would have three properties going on to the tax rolls. So that's my rationale.
Who's going to, who would purchase that property?
Well, I know for a fact, one group contacted the VFW regarding purchasing it. I have no idea where it went after that.
It is a nonprofit group.
Well, listen, I want to, I want to be respectful to you, Mr. Morris. I heard your son was involved in this. And this was not just rumor, this is in the paper.
Obviously, you're misinformed, aren't you?
Okay.
Okay.
Didn't you notify your son, who is in real estate, regarding the property?
All right, let me, I understand what it's...
It's either yes or no, Mr. Morris.
I seem to understand where this is going now. Okay, let me make it very clear what transpired. When they said this, I was very open in saying, I think it should go out, let them give it to a real estate broker, see if you can get more money for it. It's my understanding that the corporation, if they sold it for $1 million, would divide up the money between the active members that have VFW. That being said, did I notify and tell my son this property is probably going to come available? Yes, I did. And he sent an offering letter to the, I think it's the president of the corporation, saying we'd be interested in talking to you about this property. At that point, the-
For a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
At, you, you just corrected me for interrupting, and here you go.
I didn't, I just added-
I see, okay. Now, now, they, he sent an offering letter, which if you have any familiarity with real estate, is a fairly standard practice. A real estate company comes along and says, listen, we're interested in this building, and they file an offering sheet with you. You have the option of taking the offering sheet and throw it in, throwing it in the garbage, or saying, let me look at it. Where it went after the offer sheet was sent to the VFW, I have no idea. And I made that very clear on numerous occasions, if you watched on television, then you'll know, I've stated this numerous times, that once the offering sheet was sent, I had no involvement with my son, his real estate company, or any other interaction with this program. But I'm sure you heard that, 'cause you watched this on TV.
Yeah, but why, so if you have no interaction with your son's real estate, why did you notify him?
Why wouldn't I?
Why, no, no, that's not the question, why would you?
If his company, if his company had a developer that was interested in taking down the VFW building and putting up four apartments, or five apartments, or some similar multiple dwelling, would that be bad for the village? Am I missing something?
No, you're not missing something, but you-
Well, again, would it be bad for the village, then?
You, you know, look, uh, you, you, uh, don't have to be that personally involved, the, the board-
How personally involved are we talking about?
Mr. Markounis, here, and the other, John, uh-
How, how personally involved are you talking about? I advised him this property might be for sale, and he sent an offering letter. How much less involvement or more involvement? I mean, this obviously sounds like you have an agenda, so let's get it out and say what you gotta say.
Mr. Morris, I'm gonna wrap it up, but-
Okay.
As far as I'm concerned, I think you overstepped your bounds, and, uh, I, I certainly do, and, and then not only that, you were negotiating on behalf of Suffolk?
What do you mean negotiating?
Who are you?
What are you talking about?
You're only a, 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 you're a trustee, that's it.
What are you talking about? Like, again, are you getting your facts confused?
You did some, uh-
Where is the negotiating issue you're talking about?
Mr. Morris, can you let the resident speak?
I am, but I, I have to correct it, Harris.
Okay, but you can answer when he's done.
Let, let, let me wrap it up by saying that, uh, as I told you in the beginning, I don't really attend these meetings, I watch you on television, but as far as a, a lot of people that I'm, I'm talking to, is that I think, with all due respect, Mr. Morris, you overstepped your bounds.
Okay, and in response to that, I think you were in error.
Okay, would anyone else like to speak?
What was his name?
I don't know. Kathy?
Kathy? What was his name? Oh.
He didn't say his name and address?
I didn't say his name. I didn't say his name.
Jim Janatino, 2 Memorial. Last month, I asked you, Mayor, about the speed limit signs on Memorial Drive, which has been going on for two years. You told me you would take care of it with the DVW director. How long does it take to put up two signs? This is a speed limit sign, I'm not asking for a sign for my property or anything else. How long does it take to get two speed limit signs on the street? We just passed more speed reductions, and those signs will go up before these signs go up. Just like all the no parking on this side, every single pole on that street today was put up with no parking on this side of the street. I think it's ridiculous.
Can we, can we, can we possibly have the, uh, the speed limit signs put up on Memorial Drive in conjunction with the, the no parking signs on Temple Lane? Mayor?
Um, I was just gonna say that I was gonna have Joe Hunt come up and, and speak on the speed limit signs.
Okay.
To answer your question, Jim, Mayor DeBoer, thank you. I'm re-facing speed limit signs right now, they changed the speed to lower them, so the cost factor to the village is cheaper than buying brand-new ones. It's in the works, but we had last week preparations for a storm that never came, so we lost a week. But we are working with the Police Department, we have been out inspecting signs, making sure the distance between the signs are proper, and the speed sign in the areas are at the right speed limits with the Police Department. So, it is in the works, Jim, and trying to save money, things don't happen like that.
Well, this is a couple of months ago, it's the first I, uh, we've reacted.
Adam DiStefano, 19 Prairie Avenue. Uh, I looked at, with everything that was going on with the VFW, I've been keeping up to date with it, and it, it's a very tough call, and, um, I don't know if I'm happy with the board's decision or not, I see the two arguments, and they're both very valid arguments. You have one argument, the being fiscally responsible and not taking the gamble, not taking the chance, 'cause we are in a tight spot, and then you have the other side, uh, that wants to honor these veterans who have lived in this community for so long. Uh, looking at this decision, um, I can't say I'm happy with it, but I also can't say I'm disappointed with it. I think it was a tough and responsible decision, and I do encourage even the board members who voted against, uh, purchasing the property, and seeing if there is any way that the village can aid the VFW in a transition, as you've said, using this as a meeting hall, um, even maybe offering up the community service for the, our community center for larger events for them, something that could help them in this very tough transitional period, because just like we're going through tough financial times, they are also going through them. And, uh, I do thank the board members for, as you can see from the vote, it was a very tough decision. Uh, I thank them for taking their time with this, uh, even though I know everyone's not happy with the decision. Uh, I'm glad that we went for a fiscally responsible choice, which was, I would imagine, difficult for most of the members, and even difficult for the members who voted to try and help out the veterans. So, my recommendation is, anything we can do with the resources we have, as you said, Mayor Beato, we would do anything to help out the veterans in that from now on, and I think we should, even if we can't purchase the building, do what we can to help out the VFW, 'cause these have been people who have fought for this country, and some of them have known, probably all of them know someone who lost their life defending this country, so I thank the board for their time in considering this, and let's move forward with helping out the VFW now in the future.
Thank you, Adam.
Tom Zordan, 249 Parkside Drive. Good evening, Mayor and Board. Uh, as you know, last year I retired, and, um, at the end of September, and in the beginning of October, I was supposed to receive a final paycheck, and, um, I'd like to know when I'm gonna get that, it's a year now.
Mr. Zordan, um, you know, you've, you've come to the board on several occasions at the meetings, um, we have an attorney who's handling this, um, have your attorney contact our attorney.
Uh, as a matter of fact, number one, your attorney told you exactly what to pay me and when to pay me. Number two, your attorney has not returned phone calls to my attorneys-
Okay.
So, my attorney stopped calling in December.
Mr. Zordan?
Okay, that's number two. And, the fact of the matter is, you, Mayor, decided not to give me my final check.
No, that's not true, I don't have that power, but thanks, Tom.
Okay.
Uh, the bottom line is, is that you need to have, I cannot discuss this with you at the board meeting, you need to have your lawyer contact our lawyer, maybe it's not a phone call, maybe it's a letter, to say that, that our lawyer has gotten it, because our lawyer has a much different story.
I've talked to you and the board about this-
Okay, Mr. Zordan, with all due respect, I am asking you to please refrain from, from bringing this subject up, as the board cannot discuss it with you, it has to go through our labor attorney.
Fine, it's just gonna cost the village more money, 'cause they're gonna have to pay their labor attorney-
Okay.
-to tell you again to pay me. Fine, okay. With, and that, that being said, I was gonna skip this subject, but back in March, I asked you a question, and that was, when I left, how come you didn't ask me anything about the finances? How come you didn't ask me where things were? How come, when the treasurer said he couldn't find things, you didn't have him contact me? You never answered that question.
Mr. Zordan, again, this is-
It's seven months later, do you have an answer?
Mr. Zordan, again, this is also leading to the same subject matter that I cannot discuss with you here in the boardroom. If you have any questions, please have your attorney direct them to our Labor Council, and that's all I can tell you.
Uh, it's, it's a shame that you have to hide behind this imaginary labor-
Mr. Zordan, please, if you have anything-
...thing, instead of being a leader, nor the mayor.
If you have-
You made the decision.
Okay, Mr. Zordan, I'm gonna ask you to please sit down, unless you have something to discuss-
Okay.
-about the village, other than the, the, the subject matter of your employment with the village.
Mayor, can Terry, can Terry just give him some legal guidance on that?
No, because our Labor Council is handling this.
Okay.
Okay. Um, has the New York State AUD report for the fiscal year ending 2015 been filed?
No. Not as of yet.
So, so then it's late?
Uh, yes, we knew that, though.
All right, now, has the 2014 AUD report been filed?
No.
So, that's also over a year late. Um, when I was, a couple of months back, when I asked you these questions, and you decided not to answer, you had the treasurer read a statement, and in that statement, it was a letter that supposedly was never received by the board, but they got it, and, um, he basically read all these nice things that are accounting policies, like, you know, if you don't have this in place, then these things could happen. But, lo and behold, none of those things did happen. So, now I'm asking, has the bank reconciliations been finalized for May 31, 2015?
Yes.
Okay, I have here the balance sheet for May 2015, and in this balance sheet, just the water fund, it says the water fund has $2,100,000 in cash. How that occurred is beyond all reason, considering they don't bill out that much money at, during the month of May. And it says there's no money due, it says, actually, the receivables are negative, meaning we owe people money. So, I don't know how that was reconciled. Then, I look at the general fund, and it says the general fund has a negative $3 million in cash. So, I don't know how that's reconciled, 'cause the bank wouldn't allow us to have negative $3 million in cash. So, if these accounts are reconciled, then, uh, something really, really strange is going on. There's some other things here, like, you know, did we pay our, uh, our union, uh, not union, our pension for last year? Because according to this, we owe, mm, I don't have the right page in front of me, but we have, I think we owe $160,000 for the water fund, $168,000 for the sewer fund, half a million dollars for the police pension, and a couple hundred thousand dollars for the employee's pension from last year. I mean, is that correct, too? We didn't pay our pension? But, yeah, I, where'd all the money go? I mean, are these things actu-, was I giving the wrong information here? I just got it the other day. I mean, you tell me, you're saying it's reconciled, but is that correct? Does, is, does the village have negative $3 million in cash? Does the water fund have $2.1 million in cash? Simple yes or no would satisfy.
We are in the process of reconciling various accounts. To answer the question on the retirement system, what we did is, we paid that retirement bill, as you know, we didn't have the cash at May 31, 2015, we did have the cash in June, we paid that, uh, payment in July. The amount that's showing up as due this year is related to the interest component of that retirement that was accrued for that period of time.
So, so we owe, we, you mean, you mean to tell me that what's on here at May 31 is interest? We owe $700,000 in interest? That seems far-fetched, but, and is, are the bank accounts, you're saying are reconciled? Are these the right numbers? Are you telling me we have $2 million in a water fund cash account, and we have negative accounts receivable in the water fund?
No, that's not what we're saying. What we're saying is that we have reconciled our bank accounts, we are keeping up with these items, and, uh-
Says right here, cash, $2,100,000.
As I said-
This is the balance sheet, as of May 31.
Okay, Mr. Zordan, if you allow him to answer, and stop interrupting.
To begin with, I'm not gonna sit here and argue, argue with you in public about the finances of the village, and how we keep the accounts, and how we're keeping the records. Um, I can suffice it to say, and I think it deserves an explanation, why the AUD, which is the state report, wasn't filed yet. We have just gotten through the 2014 audit, um, we are filing that finalized 2014, we are now preparing for the 2015. I have explained it to the board and publicly on several occasions, there was an awful lot of things that we had to do to make sure that the books were in good order and to file the necessary reports. At the same time, there were a number of things that were impacting us, we had some major projects going on, where we had to catch up on filing for the facade program for one item, uh, we had the FEMA information that we had to file for, there were a number of capital projects that had to be put into good order, so that we had a good record of where those capital projects were, and where the funds were that we could expend the money. Uh, all of that dealing with, again, then we had a cash flow issue to deal with. So, uh, I'm not going to apologize for the amount of time that it's taken, the State Comptroller's Office has been notified about this, um, they are fully aware of it, and, uh, again, they, they came in, they did a review of the budget, that was another thing that we had going on, a very complex budget, to try to make sure that it was sound. Uh, the board had asked the State Comptroller's Office to come in and review that budget document, which they did, and wrote a report on, and I think that that report speaks for itself. Uh, but we have now a sound budget, we are, um, processing our payments in a good, sound manner, and there's a lot of work to be done, but we're getting it done.
So, in wrapping up, next time you decide to chastise people and say things weren't done in a timely fashion, make sure you get them done in a timely fashion yourself, and as far as the AUD report is concerned, it's just an annual, uh, report that has to be done, and it's not subject to you completing your audit, okay? So, just take that in mind.
No, don't even bother me. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Paul Gerard, 2 Cross Street. Um, I, I see that there's a item on the agenda for resolution to amend budget, uh, so I don't know if, uh, this is being discussed at that time, but, um, is there any, um, interest on the board's part to begin the budget process early, earlier than we have in the past? I brought this up before, uh, my concern is, I'm not, um, I'm not getting good feeling that we, um, are not gonna be in the same position that we were last year, where the residents were hit with double-digit increases on taxes. Um, and, uh, we, we, we took a knife where we could in a very short amount of time, and, um, I know myself, as a resident, I would like more time to see that proposed budget, um, and to maybe offer any ideas, because I, I didn't see any significant, uh, good ideas that were put forth last year that, you know, I guess knocked a couple of percentage points off. So, um, is there any appetite to start this process sooner than in the past?
Yeah, let me just, I wanted to answer your, uh, resolution to amend the budget.
I'm sorry?
You, you asked about resolution to amend the budget.
Well, I-
Yeah, I'll just tell you what-
If I'm bringing up a topic that's on there, I'd say, then I'll just wait, but I-
Well, I'll, because there's not audience participation, and you asked the question, I'll just tell you, um, Novartis actually donated $10,000 to the village, um, but it was earmarked, $5,000 for the Police Department, and $5,000 for the Fire Department. Um, they now, uh, wish to use that money, uh, for equipment, so we need to amend the budget to put 5,000 into the Fire Department budget, and 5,000 into the Police budget. So, that's the amendment tonight.
Okay.
Um, in regards to the, uh, budget process, yes, I'm very much interested, um, in starting that early, Paul. Um, I'm just hoping that, um, you know, Mike has been working very hard in, in assuring that, um, the state of affairs in the Treasurer's Office has been reconciled, and we are, um, at a portion where we can, um, go forward soundly. at a portion where we can, um, go forward soundly. So as soon as I get the, the green light from him saying, okay, Trish, we, we've got it all, everything is caught up, um, you know, due to the fact that things were in such disarray, um, then that's when I, I would like to start early, yes. The answer is yes. I'm just waiting for that green light from Mike, so that we know that we're in a position where we can go forward, um, soundly.
Okay.
And I thank you, by the way, for your offer to, to make any suggestions, we're always looking, you know, for, another pair of eyes never hurts.
Okay. Um, this last point, um, again, going back to the V F W, um, you know, I share the gentleman's concerns, I think there's good arguments on both sides, um, to support the V F W, but also to, uh, you know, understand our fiscal constraints. But then, going back to the gentleman that brought it up earlier tonight, uh, his opening comment was, we don't get the impression that the folks on this board work together to find solutions. And, um, I, I can't, I, I, I don't think any of us residents can, uh, express our disappointment enough with that quality of this board. Um, the, uh, I, you know, there, there might, there might be some middle ground here. Um, we have a property that I believe, uh, Mr. Rice brought up, uh, earlier, that it's somewhere over a half a million dollars in appraised value. Um, we're being offered it for less than a third of that. I would think that, you know, maybe there's something, maybe there's a two-year period where if we can show that we can get positive cash flow out of this property, that we continue it, and if we can't show it in two years, well, then we sell it. And, you know what, we're probably not going to, uh, risk anything. I don't, you know, things like that, I'm not saying that's the best idea, but there are ideas out there, there's some, there's some, uh, there's, when work, when people work together, you sometimes come up with a lot of better solutions than, 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 you know, the two extremes, which, which is where you're both at. And, um, uh, we need to see that out of this board, and, um, I, I mean, since I've been coming here, I haven't been seeing it, it's, it's, it's been in the past year, um, and it's, it's very disappointing. So, um, you know, I urge, some of you folks are, uh, running for office again very soon, um, it's, this is, uh, this, this aspect of this collective board is, uh, is very disappointing, and, um, it's, it, it's, it's hard to vote for, for, for folks, again, that, that are not, not championing that cause, that are, that are, that are putting the village first and not either themselves first or their party first. Uh, yeah, it does feel like Washington, and, uh, I don't think any of, you know, there's very few of us here that are, that are, um, really pleased with what they're doing. Mr. Morris, um, I think that, I've said it before, I think the fact that there, there have been enough people that got up here and have had concerns about your ties with your son, you coming to, going to your son and, and telling him, uh, in so many words, that you should probably make an offer on this property for the same amount that the, the V F W offered Sufferin' to take. Um, whether, whether that just looks bad, or it smells bad, but really isn't bad, you really should abstain from these, these, these votes, uh, because the appearance is that you have self-interest here. Mr. Byrne used to be on this board, um, he didn't give any appearance to that, but he knew that just the fact that he had any affiliation with the V F W, he took the high road, he was professional, he put the village ahead of himself and said, I'm going to abstain from these votes. I only hope you can come around and realize that you're giving everyone the appearance, everybody that comes here, everybody that watches this on YouTube, that you have self-interests here, whether you do or not, okay? You're giving the appearance of that, and when you give the appearance of that, you discredit the entire board, okay? So please, think about the village, not yourself, and abstain when you should abstain. Thanks.
Thank you.
Kathy's taking her jacket off, and I'm getting ready to open mine on.
It's getting cold up here.
Hi, Susan Golden, Five Stockbridge Avenue.
Can't hear you.
What's your name?
Um...
We can't, we can't hear you. Oh, I'm s- just pull up. Put, push it up, like, towards your mouth.
Like that?
Nope, up, up.
Up, like that?
Yeah, good, right there.
Does that work? Okay. Susan Golden, Five Stockbridge Avenue. Um, Mr. Hagan.
Yes.
I was very deeply disturbed that during an executive session of the village board, you allegedly made a lewd and inappropriate comment and hand gesture of a sexual nature in the presence of the entire board while speaking with the mayor. Is this true?
No.
Okay. I'm also aware that the mayor reported this to Mr. Markounas, and I was wondering whether you ever spoke to trustee Hagan about this?
I did speak to trustee Hagan, I did receive a phone call from the mayor in regards to this, this action that took place in the boardroom. Um, yes, I did.
Okay, and did you make any workplace sexual harassment reports?
No.
Okay. Um, you know, I find, I certainly found the allegation extremely, extremely disturbing, and I think that it's not something that people should ignore, and I think it's something that everyone should take very, very seriously, because women should never be treated with such a lack of respect. Um, I guess that's it, Mr. Hagan, if you're, you're sticking by that, yes?
Yeah, I would never do that.
Okay.
I haven't.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Andrew Zavoski, Three Center Street. Uh, good evening, board.
Good evening.
Uh, I want to commend you on taking, uh, taking action on this overcrowded condition within the village, I really commend you. Uh, I'm concerned, one thing, about the inspections for those individual units or residencies that are non-owner occupied. On the inspections, and I guess this goes to Terry, on the inspections, are they going to be announced or unannounced, inspections on an annual basis?
The way the law is written, or the proposed law, that the building department will make appointments to go there.
Okay, because if they're kind of announced, I'm sure that those individuals who are in violation will certainly tidy up their place and keep it in order, so as if everything is just hunky-dory, so to speak, and then all of a sudden, uh, the inspection occurs and it's business as usual with all these people living in overcrowded conditions.
The, the problem is the, the constitutional aspect of it, that you can't force somebody into allowing an inspector into, into the home or dwelling. So the way the, um, permitting requirement is, is that the building inspector will tell them what time, you know, make an appointment for them to do the inspection. Of course, that possibility always exists, but then, assuming they, uh, do the inspection, they may, very well may see, uh, things to make them suspicious, and in any event, whenever there's any type of basis to get a search warrant, then that's the, the method by law that has to be employed. There, there is a very delicate line that has to be drawn between a permitting process like this and the Fourth Amendment rights of the property owner.
I see. Yeah, it's just one of my concerns that I have, because I know some people probably be very, trying to, you know, kind of get out of certain things and try to circumvent things, so, all right, thank you very much.
I also, our code enforcers are very, very well-trained. They know what to look for, how to look for it, and can tell when people are not doing the right thing. So, the team is very strong, very educated, and very well in knowledge of what they should be looking for to see if someone's, could you, how do you hide four beds? You know, that should be a one-bed bedroom.
Right, unless they're using sleeping bags or something like that, and they just take them with them, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, that, that actually happened, I'll just tell you a quick story, we had a house, and, uh, people were, uh, utilizing the attic, and it was, uh, non-conforming use, and, um, they, they took all their clothes out of there and anything to make it look as though that they were sleeping up there, but what they forgot to do is unplug the television that was up on a nice stand, and you, you, they're shaking their heads, and, and a couch, and, you know, it, it, it was, just because there wasn't a bed there, they knew that some, you know, so, it, it's, it's an appointment, but I don't think that you can move, like Joe said, you can't, like, hide five beds or four beds, and it's very difficult to completely clean it out to where our code enforcers wouldn't catch something.
Well, I applaud your efforts.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Okay, if not, we'll move on.
I, I think you have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Debbie.
Hi, I'm Debbie Tap over in Oakdale Manor. You know, Mr. Hagan, are you aware of what, Mrs., Mr. Hagan? Are you aware of what? Are you aware of what Mrs. Adware asked you?
Uh, you can repeat that.
I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Are you aware of what this lady asked you?
Did you repeat what she asked?
Ask him again, please, he had no idea. Additionally, Mr. Morris, this was an important question, and I took photographs of your hand gestures, again. Could you bring up what you were saying, please, again? Mr. Hagan did not hear you. Um, yeah, Mr. Hagan. Yes.
I'm sorry? She just asked for her to repeat something she said, Jim.
Okay.
School of audience participation.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Hagan, I asked you, I asked you whether, at an executive session of the village board, you made a lewd, an inappropriate comment and hand gesture of a sexual nature in the presence of the entire board while speaking with the mayor.
And I said I didn't do that. I don't recall doing it.
He said no.
Okay, I just want to make sure that you did hear what she asked. The reason that I'm bringing it up again is because at the same, I have a reason that I'm bringing it up again, Mr. Morris, you can't hear me now?
No, now we can hear you.
Can you hear me? Okay. The reason I'm bringing it up again, Mr. Morris, are you gonna wave hand gestures at me again?
Excuse me?
Yeah, you just did it. Listen, everybody, please pay attention to Mr. Morris's hands. When he, when anybody is speaking...
All right, Debbie, you have to talk to us. Debbie, you gotta talk to us.
Hmm?
You have to address the board, you can't...
I know, I, just, everybody, you can't see his hands.
No, I'm not, I'm not watching, but anyway, just address the board.
Well, I just took, I took the photograph of his hands once more with the rude gestures. Mr. Morris, please be polite to the rest of us.
Obviously, you have a problem that probably requires some help, if you think...
Mr. Morris, the problem I have is your hands.
Excuse me, excuse me. When she wants to say, my holding my hand up is a rude or lewd gesture...
You hold your hands up, like, there's no problem.
Then obviously, she has a problem.
But one finger is more prominent than the other.
You want to take control in a meeting?
All right, you are in front of you.
Excuse me.
Do you want to take control in a meeting?
I just did, thank you.
Well, then...
To all the board members, when a lady, a gentleman is walking in front of you, please don't make any hand gestures. I have photographs this time, again.
Okay, would anybody else like to speak? Okay, we will move on. Uh, village clerk.
We have the approval of the regular board meeting of September the 9th.
Do I have a motion?
So.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? So moved.
Also, we have the agreement with, um, Corinne Crawford for her consulting as the facade program. So.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounas?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried. Um, I would like to say on the next, uh, before we start the next, um, item on the agenda, um, it is, uh, Michael Curley requesting a special permit for Club Soto, which he is opening a new business in the downtown area. Uh, Mr. Curley had all intentions of being here this evening to answer everyone's questions, anyone's concerns. Unfortunately, his brother passed away this morning, so he will be unable to attend tonight. He does ask that the board does go ahead, um, and vote on his, uh, live entertainment permit. Uh, he did come to the workshop, and he did furnish the, uh, board with all of his permits, um, everything, uh, was approved, uh, which is what the, um, the board members had asked for, so he is now returning to ask for his, uh, live entertainment permit. Uh, but he is not here tonight to answer questions, and he does apologize, and of course, I, uh, did, uh, let him know that, you know, I'm sure that we'll all be thinking about him and his family tonight, um, so...
I make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Can we do the particulars?
Oh, sure, yes.
Yeah, I mean, it should be as in accordance with the application, the hours are set forth in the application, um, and we have the usual, uh, conditions, whenever a live entertainment permit is granted, that, um, the sound not exceed 90 decibels at the property limit, at the property line, that the permit can be suspended by the mayor if the permit's violated, um, or there any disturbance caused by it, subject to revocation by the board of trustees following an opportunity to be heard.
Okay, so, please include that, uh, if you're motioning, it is to include Terry's statement. So I have a motion?
So moved, including Terry's statements and rules.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounas?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried. We did not need a roll call on that, I don't know why I did one, but it's just, I guess, it doesn't really matter, but, um, I guess my roll calls have just been rolling along tonight.
You're rolling on your roll calls.
I'm rolling on my roll calls. Um, okay. Virginia, do you have anything else?
Nope, that's it, no, you're...
Okay. Um, Finance Department, Mike Janito.
Yes, Mayor, we have, um, three resolutions before the board, and, uh, one of them is, in February of 2015, the village, as you know, received a generous donation from Novartis in the amount of $10,000, with the stipulation that $5,000 be spent for police purposes, and the other $5,000 be spent for fire department purposes. The departments have contacted us and said that they are ready to spend the money. Uh, at the end of 2015, which our fiscal year ends in May, that money, uh, was restricted for these purposes, and the resolutions before you are to ask that that, the 2015-16 budget be amended to appropriate that $10,000 with $5,000 increasing appropriations in police equipment, and the other $5,000 increasing appropriations in fire department equipment.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounas?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
The second resolution before you is that the Elks Club gave a donation of $500 to the police department, specifically to be spent on police purposes. The police chief has advised that he would like to have that money spent on equipment, so the resolution before you is to do two things, number one, to accept the donation of $500, and the second is to amend the 2015-16 budget, increasing revenues from donations of $500, and expenditures or appropriations for police equipment for $500.
Thank you, do I have a motion to accept the donation? Do I have a second?
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved?
Right, and the last...
Resolution number 22, to amend the budget. So I have a motion?
So.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounas?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
Okay. The last resolution, number 23, um, is, uh, that the budget for the recreation Sufferin' Day, uh, donations was for... donations was for $8,800. To date, we've received about $6,700. We expect perhaps a few hundred dollars more to come in. On the other side of the equation, on the expenditures, we spent a little under $11,000 to date, and there are some additional invoices yet to come in. So, there is money that we restrict every year, that whatsoever left over in the Suffering Day account, and at the end of 2015, there was roughly $7,800. This resolution will appropriate $5,000 of that money to allow for the expenditures, the increased expenditures in the Suffering Day budget.
That's resolution 23.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Janito. Trustees?
I have something on the police chief.
Clark? Mr. Hagan has something for you.
Chief Osborne, would you revisit those speed bumps on Ramapo if the money's in the budget this year?
Absolutely, but yeah, I have a report for the Department of Armed Associates for traffic consultants, more to walk, I have it right, my office, I work there every day, it was, oh, so, yeah, truly, whatever you decide you want to do, I'll, I'll...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the other trustees?
Is there any further on the farmer's market and their Oktoberfest?
Yes.
Do we have any further information on that?
It is going forward.
Okay.
As far as I know, they've asked for us to put the information on the sign out on Virginia Mentioner gazebo Avon Park. Elaine's already taken care of that.
Oh, great.
So, I believe they're moving forward, and hopefully...
They asked for the extra time?
Yeah.
Right, they asked for the extra time. The lights, I believe the chief was supplying, the, for the... Okay. Great, thank you.
Did you hear of a problem?
No, someone was asking me about it, so I says, you know what, I'll ask him, follow up with it.
Yeah, it's up on the board.
Yeah, I thought it was okay.
Does anybody else have anything, any of the other trustees?
Okay, I just have a few things. We had a request from a boxer productions company, they would like to film a movie, The Bleeder.
Ooh.
I know it sounds horrible, but it's actually, sounds very interesting. It's set in the 1970s in Bayonne, New Jersey, and it tells the true story of Chuck Webner, the New Jersey heavyweight boxer, who lasted 15 rounds with Muhammad Ali, and it will be starring Leif Shriver and Naomi Watts. So, they're asking to use the Lafayette Theater, they have contacted Lafayette Theater, and they have agreed upon the inside of the theater. They have now asked for the exterior of the theater to be used, so we are working, we'll be meeting with them this coming week with Chief Osborne to work at the details, to make sure that it has the least impact to the village, and if in fact it has too much of a negative impact to the village, obviously, we will not go forward with it, so I just wanted to make the Board aware of that. I also wanted to talk about the Hurricane Joaquin that didn't happen, which we were all very, very happy about. I have to tell you, in the early forecast of Hurricane Joaquin, when it looked like as though this area was going to be impacted, I called together our emergency services and our DPW crews, who immediately went into action for Virginia to turn the tape over.
No, we need a new one.
Oh, a new one.
Again. Yeah, no kidding.
Go ahead.
Immediately went into action and had this village completely prepared, if in fact we were impacted by Hurricane Joaquin. So, I want to thank all of them. Police Chief keeping all of you notified, making sure he sent out announcements as needed, attending all of the webinars that we went over to the Fire Training Center for, and preparing his department, Charles Sawicki and Joe Hunt for getting the sandbags ready, and making sure that we had all the supplies that we needed in case of flooding, our water and sewer departments gearing up, the fire department, everyone was just phenomenal in their response. I hope that every threat to our village for a hurricane of this magnitude and impact never comes here, and I hope they take a lesson from Joaquin, that we're ready and we don't want them here. So, I just wanted to thank you. We also, if it hasn't been done yet, we will be putting up some hurricane preparedness, things that we got from the Fire Training Center, so in the event that, God forbid, this does come up again, we have you all prepared. This is hurricane season, hopefully it will be a non-event for us, but I want to make sure that everyone has that information, so we will be having that up on the website. We have, I have one other, actually, two other items. The first is the Tech Spectrum Agreement. Terry has worked with Tech Spectrum, it was the Board's decision not to renew the agreement with them as of yet, although it is expiring this month, on the 9th, I believe, but we have some concerns that we would like to look into before signing with Tech Spectrum or any computer company, so we've asked them to do a 30-day extension with us, so that we can get all of our concerns sorted out. The Board has agreed that we believe that that's a good approach to take at this time. Terry has, is satisfied with the agreement of 30 days, so I would need a motion to extend the contract with Tech Spectrum for 30 days.
So moved.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried, thank you, Terry.
It is my duty as the mayor of this village to make sure that our residents are informed correctly about very serious issues that may or may not have occurred in this village. I received several phone calls this past week after our workshop meeting with residents who were concerned with Mr. Markounis and Mr. Morris, making mention that they had spoken to our gang task, Rockland County Gang Task Force, that they are gangs and gang members that exist in our village, and that there was potential for them to be soliciting our younger individuals, teenagers, to be gang-related or come into their gangs. And also, with response to, this is in response to Club Soda, and also had mentioned that the superintendent of the Ramapo Central School District, that they had had a conversation with him as well, and that he had concerns about Club Soda, and wasn't very happy about it opening. So, it's my duty as the mayor to make sure that I look into these things, and I certainly did. I prepared a conference call with myself, Chief Osborne, Detective Sergeant Mallon, and our sheriff, to talk about the possibility of gangs and the threat of gangs in the Village of Suffering. And this is a conversation that Mr. Morris and Markounis said that they had with the Gang Task Force, in particular Detective Concepcion, I believe his name is. So I want to report to you tonight that in that conversation, I was told by our sheriff and by the task force that that conversation did not occur, they did not ever say that we have a gang problem in the Village of Suffering, nor did they say that there are any Bloods that are here in the Village of Suffering posing a threat to it. And I want each and every parent to know that there is absolutely no threat whatsoever of gang issues here in the Village of Suffering. It kind of took me by surprise, because I know John Mallon, our detective sergeant, and I certainly know that if in fact we had any problems here, he would be right on top of it. And when he told me that he was not aware of any of this, it really concerned me, and that's why I reached out to our sheriff. So, I just want each and every one of you to know that there is no truth in that. The conversation that took place between the task force and Mr. Morris and Mr. Markounis was simply about the program that Mr. Concepcion has with the community policing and police academy. It was a very generalized conversation, and never once did they indicate that we had a gang problem here in the Village of Suffering. So I wanted to make sure that the residents were clear on that. And the second part is, we made a call up to Dr. Adams, because if he's concerned, then I'm concerned, and I certainly was concerned to hear that we had 21-year-olds attending the high school. So, I wanted to make sure that I had the correct information, and Mr. Morris and Mr. Markounis again told me that they had a conversation with Mr., with, I'm sorry, with Dr. Adams, and that he had serious concerns about Club Soda. Dr. Adams never did have that conversation with either Mr. Morris or Mr. Markounis. He does not really know much about Club Soda, he's heard very little about it, and he had no opinion whatsoever, and he also stated, nor would he give an opinion on behalf of the school district as the superintendent. So I just wanted to make sure that I cleared the air on that, because there was a lot of parents who were very concerned with these statements, so I just wanted to set the record straight tonight, so thank you very much. Oh, and please feel free, if anyone has any further questions, the Sheriff's Department is always very happy to take any questions that you may have, as well as the school district, so please feel free to contact them if you'd like.
Mayor, I would just like to add to your comment. I never stated I had a conversation with either Detective Concepcion or Dr. Adams. I never did. Perfectly clear.
And let me verify that. Both conversations, and yes, again, with splitting words, Dr. Adams told you that he would not make a statement for the school district. I spoke to Dr. Adams as one of the top educators in the county, and he gave me his professional opinion. The same thing is true with Detective Concepcion, and I never said that there was a Bloods gang in the village, I said that there was a member of the Bloods who was out on parole, who was living in the village, and they had some question as to whether or not he would be actively seeking to recruit members. That's exactly what was said to all of them.
Well, Mr. Morris, I'm hard-pressed to believe that Mr. Concepcion told you that, because the person that you are indicating lives in the Village of Suffering does not live here.
That was his information, and you're questioning my veracity on this, we'll call him up together, and we'll ask him.
I absolutely would, I would absolutely like to do that.
I'll be in your office tomorrow, we'll call him up, and I'll expect a public apology.
And also, we'll call Dr. Adams also, because...
We certainly will, and I'll expect two public apologies.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Detective Mallon, you were in the meeting with the phone call from the Sheriff's Department. Could you please make sure that we understood correctly what the sheriff told us with regards to the Village of Suffering?
I just need you to come to the microphone so everybody could hear you. That's you.
I just want you to make sure that I was correct in saying that there are no...
Right, they should have came through the Police Department, simple as that. You shouldn't have called on your own, you shouldn't call your friend who gave you a number from a friend of a cop's. The guy was kind of ambushed, he said.
That's not what the question was to you.
What's that?
She asked you a question, the mayor.
That, that the sheriff what?
Is there, do, or do we not have...
I was going to listen to you, I'm sorry.
Did the gang, did the sheriff indicate that the gang, Mr. Concepcion did not indicate that we have a member of a gang, the Bloods, I guess it is, here?
I don't recall what he said either way on that. I know what the truth is.
Okay.
That there is a member of the Bloods, he got out of jail, he was living in Suffering at his parents' residence, because that's what they do, parole tells you that, and he is, the information we have, he's since moved to Nyack.
Okay, and did I say anything different?
I don't know what you said, I wasn't listening to you.
No, I talked to you individually, and I reiterated the exact same thing you just said.
That's not what you said in public, and you upset people, Mr. Morris.
I said that there was a member of the Bloods who had gotten out of parole and was residing in Suffering. Is anything of that inaccurate?
Well, you said that they were trying actively recruiting, that's inaccurate.
No, wait, time out, I just made a statement. I said there was a member of the Bloods, I didn't have his name at the time, who got out of prison, was on parole...
Right.
And was subject to electronic monitoring, I believe, at the time, I'm not sure about that, and was living in Suffering.
Yes.
And all three of those items are the fact.
Yes, but he's not actively recruiting.
Now, he may have moved, I don't know.
I spoke with the Concepcion, he's not actively recruiting.
Okay, the three things, again, he said...
Well, that's the most important thing, I think.
Well, no, because he says that the modus operandi for these people is to recruit, and he explained that they look...
Not Joe, not this guy.
But the point being, the point being, exactly what I told you is factual. He was released from jail, he was on parole, he was wearing a monitoring bracelet, and he was living in Suffering.
Yeah, but nobody said he was actively recruiting. And that was the most important part, I think. That was the most pertinent part of this.
Thank you.
Okay, and in the future, you're supposed to come through the Police Department.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? Will you do that?
Thank you.
Do you agree to do that? To come through the Police Department?
Come through the Police Department with what?
With this, you don't go straight to intel, you come through the Suffering Police Department. Okay? That's the way it works.
I see.
People could have gotten in trouble for this.
Okay.
All right? He shouldn't have gave you any information.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, do I have a motion to adjourn? So moved, do I have a second? Oh, yes, please, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, please, I would like to, I would like to adjourn this meeting in the memory of two very, very special, wonderful people who were both very near and dear to me and to this village. They have given so many years of service to this village, and are just going to be really very, very missed, and I get very emotional because they both meant very much to me. One is Frank France, 51-year member of the Suffering Fire Department, a good friend of mine and a good friend to many, as well as a fellow firefighter, and also a lady who I just will remember as just such an energetic, wonderful, strong woman, who just resonated her strength to everyone, is Dorothy McClintock. She was a member of the Women's Club, the Lions Club, she always got behind any organization to help and to do good, and she should be an example for all of us, so I'd like to adjourn the meeting in both of their memories.